All right, good evening, everyone. Today's January 6th, and I want to start off by just wishing everybody a Feliz Dia de los Reyes in case you celebrate that this evening. This is the board workshop where we're going to be going over progress on our strategic plan, and I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a board meeting coming up on Monday, and it starts at approximately 7:30, so ask everyone to please join us or tune in. So with that, I think I'm just going to punt it over to you, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to introduce tonight's topic. The report is on students' special needs and talents. This is one of the strands of improvement area that we identified in the original strategic plan. And as you know, we have, as Dr. Abina said, we've been reporting to all the different activities that have been going on, and I know that recently when we did the technology report, people really felt that there had been dramatic change in the improvements there. I would say, in its own way, the improvements in this category, students' special needs and talents, is even more dramatic. And I say that with regard to various students with their special needs and talents. I think that the rap against the Tucuhos schools a few years ago, before you embarked on these improvement efforts and changes, was that it was the school district that tended to, at times, teach to the middle, and almost to the exclusion or not with any focus on the gifted students, on the special needs students, on students who had special talents as much as maybe it could or should. And with that in mind, this particular improvement plan was designed to help and support teachers with their methodology, to more effectively differentiate instruction, to improve the curriculum in ways that there would be more offerings and more approaches that would really meet the needs of all students. And I'm struck, for example, with the improvements in the special education program, which you'll hear about things like the inclusion program and some of the other consultant teacher model, and so many of the other things that have recently been brought to bear. In addition to that, you will also find, for example, students with, who are in need of more academic stimulation or rigor, the kinds of courses that have been added in recent years, the number of advanced placement and other programs along that line, the use of so many things to really improve the quality of teaching and learning in the Tucuhos schools. I did get a sneak preview of Carl Albono, Mr. Albono, the superintendent who will present this topic, and I got a sneak preview of that presentation. And you'll see just what I mean as he takes us through all the improvements that have been made in this category. Mr. Albono?
I'd like to invite the board, maybe, to sit in the audience, so you have a clear view. Are there enough chairs for us? That's okay. All right, just a moment.
I feel like we have an audience. So, good evening. This is just one in a series of presentations on our progress towards the strategic plan. The title of tonight's strategic plan is Students' Special Needs and Talents. As Dr. Wilson mentioned, it's one of eight strategic plans for the district. And we'll start with Plan A, which is challenging students at all grade levels in, I'm sorry, all students in grades K through 5. This is focused just on our elementary school, where a lot of work has been done. So, the goal, challenging students with academic programs that meet their special needs and have appropriately high expectations. So as most of you understand, under the new Common Core state standards and the curriculum that we're expected to use in our school programs, we are really leveling up for all students, and we're using more complex text, more challenging text, more challenging math problems, where students really need to explain their mathematical reasoning. So we have brought in programs that we believe are addressing this challenge and this need. I'll start with, at Cottle, our November conference day was focused on our new Reading Wonders program. It's a McGraw-Hill program, and it is implemented in grades K through 5. A couple of years back, we started with grades K-1 and 2. This year, it's the first year where this is consistently done through all grades at Cottle. We had Dorian Ural, our consultant, in, and again, her focus was using this program, which is a very, very comprehensive program, but using it to introduce students to complex text, and for those students that need support, giving them the scaffolding that is necessary to access those texts. But then for those students who are very proficient in their reading comprehension skills, taking them to another level. And the program provides this, but teachers definitely needed some training to be able to handle this. Now, the literature anthology is the basis, it's the core of the program. It has rich literature. All of those stories are online, there's an online component for students that may be better at auditory learning. They can listen to these stories and these texts with headphones. There's also a lot of visual and technology that goes along with it. A teacher resource, ACT, we call it, but it's accessing complex text. For each passage and each lesson, there are teacher strategies specifically to support students. And it could be students with English language learning needs. Our English as a New Language program, we have teachers in the classroom supporting that, and we also have our special education teachers in the classroom. And this, also, our Gen Ed teachers, access it and will have specific strategies to support their students. The program also contains an extensive library of leveled readers. So again, what it does is there's regular assessment of students' reading levels, and if we have our students reading independent, we want to make sure they're in an appropriate leveled text, challenging enough, but also not to the point of frustration. And this program has all of that, and with ongoing assessments, we're able to accomplish that. Also, there's a differentiated spelling program. Many of you may recall back to our, I know my elementary experience was, you know, a spelling list, 20 words, you know, and everyone learned the same thing. Well, that's not the best approach. Students are at different levels. A student who's acing their spelling and getting 100s every week in and week out, well, we have the ability now to challenge them with more challenging spelling words. Those students who maybe have, need more time, also have maybe lower level words that can help stretch them. The consultant is also scheduled, within a couple of weeks, to present the entire program to our secondary teachers. So up the middle high school, you know, there is a different approach, and we are adapting modules, creating our own modules around, you know, very rigorous novels, Shakespeare at the high school, Mockingbird in the middle school, just to name a few examples. But our teachers need to understand the foundational learning that is taking place at Cottle, and the skills that our students are coming up with, and that's the purpose of the meeting, which will take place in a few weeks. The teachers are also participating in professional development with our Pearson math program, which is in Visions. Today, for example, we had a math consultant working with, by grade level, with all of our teachers to help them understand the Common Core learning standards, and in Visions is aligned, but just to make sure that everything is happening the way it should be, and there's a coordination between elementary school and middle school. Also, we're looking at the New York State assessment. The State Now, and this was a bit of a challenge a number of years back, but they're releasing at least 50 percent of the state assessment questions for us to analyze. Of course, we have the student performance data for our kids, and we're looking at both of that and analyzing it and looking at maybe where there's an area of weakness, what topic we need to cover more thoroughly. We may believe we covered fractions, but maybe there's more work to be done based on what's showing up on the state assessments. So all of that happened today, and it helps us to target students' individual needs. Also, Dr. McDonald was part of that discussion. So the consultant that I described met with grade 5 this afternoon. Dr. McDonald, who has an extensive background in math, was there. So she met with middle school and then dropped down to grade 5, and there's this ongoing dialogue between 5th and 6th, 7th, and 8th grade math teachers to make sure there's an alignment and there's a bridge. The next big announcement, and this really is not specific to Cottle, but I thought this was the appropriate place to state this, Judith Hockman, who is a very nationally-recognized expert in the area of writing, we have partnered with her company, it's called the Writing Revolution. She has extensive professional development going on with districts around the nation, Washington DC, New York City, private schools such as Winward. And Judith Hockman is a very difficult person. You can't just hire her. She has to basically agree to work with you, and we've been pursuing that for a couple of years. It's costly, but the good news is, we're getting this completely free of charge. And I have to thank Dr. Abina, who pointed us out to a grant opportunity. Our high school, as you may know, for three years in a row has been considered a reward school for closing the achievement gap. And there was money to, you know, build on and enhance our success, and $50,000 was made available to us. There was an extensive application process that Dr. Linehan and I went through earlier this fall, and we have been approved. And $30,000 of that money will pay for Judith Hockman, and the good news is, we're able to share the professional development with the entire district. And we've done some work in this area in the past. We've probably trained about 20 teachers district-wide. Some teachers we hired came in with his expertise in the area of writing instruction, but now every teacher in every subject, science, social studies. So there'll be this consistent approach to teaching writing that we think will really help Tucuhos take off academically. This plan was developed by the former middle school principal, and Dr. McDonald has really been running with it, but it pertains to middle school to create additional opportunities for students that will enrich the academic program. So our middle school has partnered with Pace University. This started last year, and the graduate students came in to work with our students on robotics. A lot of it took place right here in this library. It was fascinating to see our 7th grade students working with, you know, graduate students, building robots and figuring out how they work, and a lot of different mathematics and science behind that, and it's been very successful. We're hoping to have Pace come back in, but this really inspired students in the area of robotics, and we're starting to have discussions about a robotics club. It's early in the process, but our middle school principal, as well as our science teachers, are talking about that, looking at the feasibility of it, and maybe making a presentation to our board in the near future. Also, for the first time, we've participated in Whiz Girls, and although I'm not that familiar with this program, Dr. McDonald took some of our students, our female students, through the American Association of University Women. It was hosted by the Ardsley School District, but it was something to inspire girls and our female students to pursue careers in science and math and technology, the STEAM subjects. It was very successful, and we hope to continue that year after year. Also, with the board's support, we extended the strings program that started at the elementary school and now is thriving in the middle school. Anyone that was at the middle school concert enjoyed the string section. Charles D. Chateau, who's a very accomplished professional musician, is working with our students, and we will hope that that program will continue because it is doing incredibly Plan C is differentiation of instruction. The goal is to enable and support faculty to develop differentiation of instruction skills to meet diverse student needs and create best learning experiences for each student. So differentiation is a word in education that is used a lot. It's a very broad term and may mean something different to different educators, but it's something that a lot of people talk about doing, but is really a challenge to implement and do correctly. So basically, you know, we understand that all our students are at different levels in their growth, and that can be anywhere from an elementary class to a high school, you know, advanced placement course. And the idea is for a teacher to really understand her students' needs, their skill levels, their learning styles. Our kids are all different. Some learn more visually, you know, auditory, or, you know, through reading, and there's so many different styles to learning, and the teachers have to really have a deep understanding of their students to do this properly, because at the basis is the data and understanding students' needs. From there, a tremendous amount of planning has to happen for when your students show up to really effectively differentiate. And we recognize that our teachers need two basic things. They need the resources from us, and they also need the training, because it's not something that happens easily. And we have a lot of veteran teachers with high levels of skill, but we also hired many new teachers this year. So I think we're at the point where we have the resources in place in the way of the programs, and some of them I described earlier, and we also have the support. And if you recall, last month, we had our tech presentation, the two tech coaches are part of this process. The new mentoring program that the board supported is also part of this process. And we're focused on differentiation, and I'll give you a little more detail about it. So one example is that English language learners, children, you know, that have families that speak a language other than English, and maybe their first language was not English, they get support, you know, as per New York State. This year, for the first time ever, we have certified E&amp;L teachers in the classrooms. So the idea behind this, and it's similar with special education, is that we don't pull our students out and segregate them or isolate them. As much as possible, we're giving them support in the subject area. So picture a biology, you know, class in a science lab. To try to teach a student outside of a science lab is a very difficult thing to do. Now what we have is our E&amp;L teacher going in, in some cases, to a science class, or an English class, or a social studies class, and working with the Gen Ed teacher. The other benefit that we get is our Gen Ed teachers understand strategies to help English language learners. So there's this sharing of information. The teachers are not working in isolation. The, you know, E&amp;L teacher understands how, what the needs are in the Gen Ed setting, and it's been very successful, but it is just the start, and they need further support. The tech coaches, I mentioned them earlier, you heard from them last week. I won't go into too much detail, but they are booked solid. Even after, you know, the last two months, they do not have one period available, and they are providing tremendous support. Also, they're giving a lot of resources, you know, things that we just never had before. For example, there's one particular program called Newsy LA. So if, right now, you know, a history teacher would like to share with their students, you know, what's happening in North Korea and controversy there, but has students on all different reading levels, Newsy LA produces articles at three, four, five different reading levels on the same topic. So you could have students read independently, you do have to understand their reading levels, of course, and then you can have a class discussion where everyone is informed. And these are new things that were just never possible before the current technology that we have. Also, our Cottle teachers are becoming more proficient at planning and delivering instruction using leveled readers. I really did speak to this earlier. That is through the Reading Wonders program. At the middle school, a very exciting program is happening. It's called Mindset. This is based on the work of Stanford psychologist Carol Dweck, who is, you know, widely recognized as an expert in the field of having the right mindset, a growth mindset, which is what we're striving for. We targeted middle school because we realize middle school is the age where students start to develop a fixed mindset. In many cases, they start to categorize themselves as, okay, I'm smart, or I'm not, not, you know, I'm a good athlete, I'm not a good academic student. And they tend to think that the ability they have is fixed, when that really is not the case. When you look at the brain research, everyone has the ability to grow. So we're trying to develop that growth mindset with all of our middle school students. First, we did training with staff, and Dr. McDonald took the lead on that, and now we are starting to introduce this philosophy of, an approach to education, to our middle school students through health programs. We're excited about it, and we look forward to great results there. The high school is using a lot of varied approaches to accessing complex text, and meeting with some of our English teachers at the high school level. I said, "Give me some examples I'm presenting to the board," and they talked about Shakespeare, which is a very complex text for students to grasp, especially with the language, you know, from several hundred years back. However, Shakespeare, of course, was written as a play. You know, we tend to read Shakespeare, but it really was meant to be acted out. Our teachers are doing very engaging activities, such as allowing students to act out particular scenes. They're using film studies, a lot of great film and some current film that they're analyzing to help students access this text and gain a deeper understanding of it. So it's another example of differentiation. Finally, I'll end with this. We really stepped up the support of teachers visiting other teachers' classrooms, and that's collegial visits. We have teachers doing some very exciting stuff. We have Joanne Orenstein doing flipped classrooms, for example. But you need to see what that looks like. We talked about how teachers sometimes can be very isolated in their work, so getting them into other teachers' classrooms, all the administrators have supported release time for them to go in and see what's happening. And that's been very, very exciting and productive as well, is the sharing of ideas and expertise. Next, Plan D is the Special Education Two-Year Plan. If you look at the dates, this is pretty much already ended. It was 2013 to 2015, so we did create a very comprehensive special education plan that was adopted by the board two years ago. It is now being revisited and reviewed again. I don't anticipate many changes, but with our new law firm of Keenan Bean, I did ask them to take one more look, just to make sure we're aligned with any new procedures or policies out of New York State. So they're taking one look at it, and probably within a month or so, I will be back to the board just to renew that plan for another two years. Plan E is a special education inclusion model. This ran from 2013 to 2016, so, but this is something that we will continually work on. It's increasing opportunities for individual education program students to learn in classes with non-disabled peers through consultant teacher services and co-teaching programs. Some progress towards this is that our district-wide special ed programs are offered at every grade level. We have mainstreaming opportunities for kids from K through 12. They take different forms, so we have co-teaching, not at every grade level, and it's not required as part of New York State's recommended programs, but we're committed to it, and when that is the best way to meet the needs of our children, we've implemented it. So for example, at Cottle, it only exists at 4th grade. In middle school, we do have it at all three grade levels. It does not exist at the high school, but every year, we engage in a process, and it'll start in about two months, that we call projections. So we don't have fixed programs year after year. We look at the needs of our students and figure out what are the programs that we need to best meet their needs, and we look at them as a cohort. And it's a very thoughtful process that will start taking place in a couple of weeks. When appropriate, students who are alternately assessed that are in special classes, we also try to provide mainstream opportunities. Some examples of that are that they are with non-disabled peers in special classes like phys ed and music and health classes and computer classes and art classes whenever possible. Another example is down at Cottle, our students in special class, whenever possible, we have them join with a buddy class for specific events and programs and opportunities when we believe it's appropriate and they can handle it. I'm also very proud of the work that the entire special ed department has done in breaking the mindset of whatever the IEP states at the end of a year, that's fixed for 12 months. We don't revisit that. What we are doing now is, we're doing continual amendments throughout the year. If a child makes growth from September through now, the committee may reconvene, or a subcommittee may convene, and make an amendment and try to do something less restrictive where we encourage and foster independence with our children. The goal is always independence, and that's something that I think we're getting better and better at, and we, I plan to see that continue. Also, training. Again, none of this happens without support and training. We've had a number of expert consultants come in. I do believe we've developed, like with our technology teachers, in-house expertise and the capacity for our in-house experts to mentor the young teachers. So although we're still, at times, using outside consultants to help them with integrated models, we also now have enough seasoned teachers and highly competent teachers that they are mentoring our younger teachers and giving them the strategies that they need. RTI, Plan F, is Response to Intervention. This was a two-year plan leading into this year. Enhance the process and structure of response to intervention programs in all grades K through 12. At the basis of everything, and this is a theme that you've heard over and over, is good data. And the board, a couple of years back, if you recall, supported the purchasing of an online normed assessment, the STAR reading and math program. And this is something that we do three times a year with all, every student in the district in grades K through 8. So it's an online normed assessment. It's an interesting tool. The teachers, basically, will have their students for about 20 minutes, 25 minutes, and it self-scores, but it provides a wealth of information. And I have to admit, two years back, when we were researching different programs, I was skeptical. What real valuable information can you get about a child in 25 minutes? But it is highly accurate. It's recognized as one of the top and most accurate normed assessments that you could use for RTI screening. And what it does is, if a child answers questions correct, two or three questions correct, it right away adjusts and will present more challenging questions to the student. If a child starts getting questions wrong, it'll lower the level of difficulty. So it is very accurate. Now what we have, we have this data dating back over two years, and it's incredible just to sit at a committee meeting, or a 504 meeting, or even, you know, a building-level meeting, and to show parents that steady growth over time. And nothing makes me more happy than when I see this slope, a perfect slope, and the progress and growth of a student. If you don't see that growth, we have to rethink what programs and strategies we're using with the child. So there is a much more thoughtful process happening with our instructional support teams that exist in every school. All our experts get around a table, they look at the data. It's not the only data we look at, but it's a strong piece of data, and a lot of discussions and decisions have been based on it that have benefited students. In grades 9 through 12, initially, we did, we started first year doing universal screenings in the high school. What we realized, we backed off that a little bit, and currently, we are doing progress monitoring. So we're still using the STAR reading and math, but for those students who we have concerns about. If they're students who are still struggling with their skills, they may be getting some supports. We are continuing to track them, but we're not doing every student in the high school at this point because we didn't believe it was necessary. Professional development, STAR has gotten better over time. Every year, it gets just more and more robust. So we have our consultants coming back. It's through BOSI's, and there is no cost for this. It's part of the purchase of the program. But we continue to help our teachers understand how to use this data, because it's something that can get very complex. The program itself offers strategies to teachers. So if a child is struggling with a math concept, they will give you resources and strategies that you can use to work with that child. So if you're a math AIS teacher, that, this is a perfect tool. But even a Gen Ed teacher, and they are using this information, and we continue to train them, so they understand what's available for them. Last bullet is just instructional support teams in each school have been effectively recommending data-driven RTI strategies. And what this committee does, as I touched on earlier, they will meet, they will analyze the data, they will hear presentations from teachers, they will ask for evidence of students' work, and then we have a team of professionals, all of our experts, special ed teachers, speech teachers, academic teachers, all giving feedback on how to best support the children. That is the conclusion of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, well, thank you very much for a very robust, you know, presentation, and I mean, maybe I'll start off by just saying how, you know, once again, how happy I am, you know, to see that not only did we develop a plan, but we've actually implemented the plan, and clearly, you know, we're having some positive impacts on, you know, some of the recommendations that were made, and, you know, I think, I think that's great, and I think that's always been, you know, my chief concern, is, you know, there's a lot of people that put plans together, but then they sit up on the shelf and nothing ever gets done with them, and clearly, that's not the case here. So, you know, I really commend, you know, you, Charlie, for the assistance that you've given us in developing this plan, and then I understand that Mr. Albano is kind of the chief implementer of some of these things.
Well, you know, as long as you're saying that, Julio, I have to say, you and the board have been so supportive of this whole approach to improvement, and that's been critical. Carl has been terrific, and... Carl has been terrific, and as has been the staff as a whole. I think that the key to it was that we established needs, we identified what the board and the community and the faculty themselves felt were areas that needed to be improved. And based upon that, working with, again, the faculty and the administrators and with the board's oversight, identified strategies of addressing those needs that had been identified through that process. And now, actually, our, and I'm amazed at it myself, really very closely following that plan and working together to improve it. I think the professional culture of the schools are just so different from the original needs assessment and the results and the improvement in the quality of teaching and learning. It really is a great thing you've got going here. It's to the credit of the school and the community.
Right. And I think, too, that, you know, oftentimes, we ask people to perform without giving them the tools that they need to succeed. And I think that, you know, through the support of the community and its budgets, you know, over the years, you know, we have that ability to give, you know, the district through professional development and other tools so that people can actually get a lot of this stuff done and improve. So I wanted to know, anybody else have any comments or questions or anything?
I'll just say, there's a couple of things I wanted to say. First, it's easy not to change, and a lot of times, people won't do the extra thing because it's more work. So the first thing I want to do is to thank the administrators and thank our teachers for making these changes and bringing, implementing these new programs. I mean, it's one thing to provide the programs, it's another thing to learn how to use the programs, how to implement them, and how to better educate these kids, which is ultimately the goal that we all want. Secondly, I think we often talk about the size of our school being a disadvantage sometimes because we're so small. But when you look at a lot of these programs, I think the speed that we're able to implement these things sometimes might be a little bit faster because we are so small and because our teachers and our administrators know these kids so well, it's really great that we can kind of identify kids that would do well in one activity versus another. And I see it even with my own kids and some of the things that they're doing now that are different than probably what they were doing three or four years ago. So I commend everybody for really tackling these programs and fitting them in for the right kid for the right type of activity. And lastly, I just want to mention, you talked about Charles Duchateau. I'm friends with Charles, but also know some of the professional things that he's done. And that is something that we're doing where we're thinking out of the box. We have a community member who's got children in the school, who's probably one of the finest musicians that I've ever come across in my lifetime, and loves to teach and loves kids. And to give him the forum to do what he loves and lend his expertise to a group of kids, you know, despite how well the concert was, it's the idea that we're tapping into people that we have at our disposal who are experts in their particular field. And to think that kids are being taught by the man who was conducting Spider-Man on Broadway and whose wife works on Aladdin, and have them in our school district and now teaching, you know, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade kids how to play the cello and the violin. And by the way, Charles is an incredible cellist. It just shows you how great we have it and how thankful we should be, not only to Charles, but a lot of the community members who are willing to do things within the district and share their expertise. So that's sort of what really makes a district different than others, and I thank everybody involved in making those decisions.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I did just have one question in regards to special education. Julio just brought up, you know, unfortunately, where the budget does play a role. And three years ago, we did cut our B O Cs program where students were going there for technical training in certain areas. And we had talked about at the time, finding alternative programs, and I don't know if that's, I don't, I don't know the plan by heart. I don't know if it's in there. Is there a, is there a need for that? I know that there's been changes as to what the requirements are, that it seems like, you know, there's sort of two tracks. So either they're going through the regions or life skills. And is there, have we identified that there is a need for something else? And if so, you know, are we able to provide an alternative?
Sure, sure. It's a great question. What we did cut from the budget a few years back was sending students to B O Cs who did not have I E Ps. So B O Cs, and in fact, the high school guidance counselors and I went up to view their programs, and they have some wonderful programs. They just built a new television studio, for example. They have, we have a very nice, small kitchen here that we renovated for our students here in school, but it seats about 12 students. They have a commercial kitchen that, you know, you could work with 100, you know, students at a time and teach them what it is actually like to work in a fast-paced restaurant. Autobody, all of these things that, in this budget environment, it does bother me that we can't afford to send students who may not be, you know, thinking of an academic, you know, path. But we did decide, unless it was something recommended by the Committee on Special Education, that it was an expense that was just too, you know, too much at this time, in this tax cap environment. But many of our students in the past tremendous, benefited tremendously from that. On the flip side, what we do through the C S E process, we have sent students to B O Cs. If we cannot provide a program, we do have some job placement programs with local businesses. We have, you know, a decent range of opportunities for kids, but of course, we could not, you know, do autobody or, you know, commercial, you know, chef, you know, something like that. We just were not equipped, we're not set up for it. So when we believe a student would benefit from one of those programs, special education will support that. But then it becomes part of their I E P, and it's something that, of course, the board then approves. But that goes through the C S E process. So there are times where we'll send students. It's the gen ed students that, at this time, we've put that on hold.
Carl, one possible hope here. I know that you established the STEM program here, the course, actually. And I will be talking about that at a future presentation. But it's just terrific to see kids via the computer designing and manufacturing things, you know, actual three-dimensional objects and so forth, that maybe there's some hope that it'll be possible in the future to do more in the way of that kind of hands-on production right here in-house for students with different interests and abilities.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to, excuse me, say again, thank you to the teachers that do go to these extra programs, learn on how to work with these students, to all our students. Because, you know what, even our general ed students, they all have a learning way of, or style on how they learn. And I think it's just very important that teachers are fully aware of how students do learn because some students, like we said, you said, learn visually, a lot better visually. Some are more literal. And I just think it's important that they use the professional development days and learn because it's so important. Because just like we have to learn every day, I encourage my students, my kids, to learn every day something new. Our teachers should learn something new every day. So I thank you.
Couldn't agree with you more, Kathy. You know, there was a time in the past where, due to budgets, professional development was really put, it was put on hold, and I think that took a toll on us, thankfully, for just a short period of time. But I feel like we have a very robust P D program happening now for our teachers. Sometimes they'll complain that it's too much. And for example, next year, and we do listen to them, we meet regularly, and next year, what we're really planning to do, the main initiative, so you'll hear about it again, is the writing revolution. So, you know, there'll be other things happening, of course, but that will be the main focus, and everyone will be involved. And the teachers are so enthusiastic about this. Because like I said, we started with about 20 teachers, because it's very expensive, that were trained, and then we had immediately afterwards, you know, the 30 or 40 people saying, "When am I getting trained?" And, you know, when, when, when? So that's when we decided it might be the right time to try to bring someone in-house and have a consistent approach to writing district-wide. So I'm excited about that.
All right. So we're going to be putting the, this presentation on the website so that people can access it at their leisure. And with that, I'll say good night and remind everybody that we do have a board meeting Monday. And again, invite everyone to either join us here or to tune in at home. So with that, good night and enjoy the weekend. Thank you.
Thanks.